Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our interview this evening with Brittany Anderson. She's a candidate for Hawaii County Council District One. Conducting our interviews are Mikelia Kuchi and Nelson Horana. And just give a brief introduction and then we'll get right to our interview. Huli PAC is a group of grassroots community advocates volunteering our time to Huli PAC. Many of us have witnessed during oral testimonies the problems of being the minority voice, observing seated representatives voting against the Aina or the majority of testifiers. The majority rule currently allows the continuation of colonial structures, corporate rule, and methods over Ika Hawaii for Aina and its people to thrive. We must collectively understand the individual power we carry as Hawaii Island residents by getting involved. And Mikelia, I think you have your, our first question tonight.
Yeah, I can kick us off. So Brittany, first, why don't you just start off by telling us a little bit about your background? And what has made you want to run?
Well, great. Thanks for that question and thanks for having me here today. My background is, I have a lot in my background. From publishing to healthcare administration, I was an educator for a little while. And currently I am living out my passion as a small business owner and farmer on the Hamakua Coast. I have a wealth of real world experience, that's for sure, and a deep understanding of what our community needs in District One. I'm running because my daughter is seventh generation on the Hamakua Coast. And so I'm running to implement change, to be a positive, a positive change for our district and implement some really great solutions so that her children can, can stay here and we can continue that lineage on the Hamakua Coast.
Wonderful. Nelson, did you want to ask your first question?
Thank you for your introduction, Brittany. My question is more infrastructure related. And you know, here on the west side, especially on the evenings, driving, you know, the highways, it's very, very dark. There's hardly any lighting. And to me, this is a public safety concern, both for drivers as well as pedestrians on the road. And I've heard from others that the reason why is because of the telescope. And the lighting needs to be dimmed or somewhat muted so it doesn't interfere with the telescope. Do you have any ideas of how we can improve the safety, the public safety? You know, regarding roads at night, it's, you know, I consider it very dangerous. So.
Yeah, sure. So a lot of our highways, though, are state owned. So there are limited, limited resources as far as a county council. We can be advocates for our state representatives to, for safety improvement measures, that's for sure. We are extremely lucky that we have, we have such, I would say, dark nights. I live off grid and I live on the Hamakua Coast where we have, we can see so many stars just from our, just with our own eyes, not with telescopes. But I hear you. I understand the concerns. And so what we can do with our county controlled roads is we can make sure that there is visibility for our pedestrians, sharing road spaces with bicycles, especially during the day and night. You know, having shoulders on our, on our county roads. In District One, we have really crumbling infrastructure with our bridges, our county bridges. We have roads that are closed and bridges that are condemned. And there aren't really very many plans in place and there's no funding in place in order to fix those roads. I know farmers that have to travel 14 miles in, on a detour, which has no lighting whatsoever, in order to get to and from their farms. So infrastructure is a big piece of why I'm running. I live on a road in Limbo as well. I think we need to put a plan in place to pave the 122 non-contiguous miles of roads in Limbo so that we can have infrastructure equity with our rural communities. I hear you as far as the, the lighting is concerned. I don't know that we can change the state light bulbs as much as we'd like to. But there are things that we can do with our county roads to increase visibility and make it safer.
Okay. Yeah, you know, it's a simple, a simple fix, maybe even be those reflective.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have, we have an intersection here, right near, near me that we have frequent accidents and we have people that get off the bus late at night, especially in the wintertime when our daylight hours are a little bit shorter. So early morning and late at night, they're getting off the bus and they have to cross the road. So putting or advocating for reflectors and high visibility crosswalks. The, the crosswalks where you hit the button and it flashes, those have worked out really nicely in other locations. So implementing just some small changes can really have a, have a positive impact and a drastic impact on safety.
All right. Thank you, Mikelia. Our next question?
Yeah, so my next question has to do with food security. And it's actually perfect talking about the Hamakua Coast because that's great farmland. So where would you direct strategic investments into regenerative agriculture? And do you have any specific examples of particular agriculture projects that you're proud of or that you'd like to highlight, that you kind of see is the, the future of where your district should go?
Yeah, absolutely. So we do regenerative agriculture and we teach it on our farm. We have 10 acres and we work very, very closely with our NRCS, which we do a lot of conservation on our property. And we were Hamakua Ranch of the Year for last year because of all of the work that we're doing with conservation. One of the things that we're doing is we have a composting facility and that can be taken on a much grander scale. So what we do when we butcher, we compost anything that we're not using hides, hooves, heads and entrails. And we compost it and it's, it turns into dirt. So what we can have on the Kamakua, which I am very, very passionate about, I could talk to you a great length. I know I only have three minutes, but I could spend a lot of time talking about it. But what we can do is we can have a composting facility to work with our other slaughterhouses and divert that waste and create soil. And we can certify that so that either it's a, a public-private partnership or it is something that the county takes, takes on on their own. We can sell that compost. We can just get certification and be able to sell that compost. So the county is, it's a revenue stream, it creates jobs, and it also diverts waste. While everybody needs soil, right? So it would be, it would be really a huge asset to our community. That's one of, that's one of the really big things that I'm very passionate about. And also helping our food hubs. We have some really fantastic food hubs here on the Big Island. We have a little bit of, I don't want to call it a food desert. We don't have a hub here on, on the Hamakua northern side. So we've got Kohala has one, Hilo has one, I know Oke Farms has one too. But between that, you know, we've got quite a few people and we've got quite a few farmers. So creating a major hub so that farmers have another outlet for their local produce, whether it's meat, poultry, eggs, vegetables, fruits, you know, taking it to a facility to be able to process that and be able to sell it. It will help our, our economy here on, on District One on the Hamakua Coast and also can put more local food in the hands of local people.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next question. Nelson?
Let's switch gears a little bit. Now that the governor has given the, each county their, you know, their decision to regulate short-term vacation rentals, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. And how it will, you know, how, you know, it impacts the local housing situation here?
Yes. So that is quite a hot button issue. And there's a few bills on the county level that are coming down the pipeline that have been in draft and out of committee, I believe, as well. So I have kind of a, an interesting perspective because we have so many farmers along the coast here. Having a vacation rental on a farm with agritourism, it would help a farmer possibly stay on their farm. So I want to recognize that that can be a huge lifesaver and a lifeline for our, our farmers. We've come, we've come a long way with being able to differentiate between an off-island owner who owns a very big house, who only rents it a couple of weeks, maybe a year, to local families that are using it to offset the high cost of living. So I want to differentiate kind of between those. I think what we could do is look at different tax scenarios where maybe it's owner occupied, you're renting out a spare bedroom because you're a farmer, you're bringing tourism to your farm, you're offsetting that cost of, of farming, because farming is very expensive. Most people don't make money farming. They do it because they love it. And so sharing it and making some money, some, some other form of income can be really, really life-altering for farmers. So maybe that's a different tax bracket because you live here, you're, you're renting out a room in your home. It's a hosted vacation rental. That I, I don't have, I don't think that that would, getting rid of that, I don't think that would significantly change the affordable housing situation. But what we can all, what we can do is increase taxes on vacant houses that are vacation rentals. Every once in a while, we can, we can balance tourism and, and farming and still be able to put local people in homes and keep them in homes. And that's, it's, it's, it's a very, very complex issue. And I don't think that we can broadly create one bill to, to meet all of those, you know, little niches. Hamakua Coast, our needs are very different than Puna, than Kona. So looking at it from a district perspective, and some communities really want it, some communities don't. And we need to have that flexibility in order to meet the needs of the communities. I've seen other places, they do a residency requirement. So you have to live in the house for a year before it's rented out. So that actually helps limit how many houses get into that vacation, you know, standalone homes, not hosted, unhosted vacation rentals are taken up. You'd have to live in it for a year before you could rent it out. So there are some really creative solutions that we can look at for the communities. Again, the communities that need that reprieve and, and a lot of the, what would be long-term rental units are being taken up by vacation rentals. But then you also have to balance that with the communities that, that need the vacation rentals because we don't have hotels. So it's, it's a very community specific and again, listening to the community and, and letting them kind of lead and creating legislation or creating bills in order to meet the needs of those people.
Brittany, I, I know that you're associated with Core 24. And I'm wondering if maybe you can sort of briefly describe what their mission is and why you're associated with them? And also where they are with respect to the development, community development of the island? What's their mission or what's their position in regard to development?
Well, so Core 24, we're a group of candidates. So we're all our individual candidates. It works what's called a slate. It's the first time, I think, on the island, if not all of Hawaii, where a slate has happened. We are all committed to getting the county back to core services. So there is a lot of waste going on with the county. And so we're all, all the Core 24 candidates are committed to getting back to the, the infrastructure, getting our wastewater treatment facilities, not dumping raw sewage into the ocean. You know, the, the kind of core services that the government is supposed to provide with our taxes. And once we nail those, then we can start looking at, you know, branching out and doing some other kind of fun stuff. But getting, getting our roads fixed, getting, you know, the things that we need to get from point A to point B safely and efficiently. So that's, that's more of what Core 24 is. And as far as development, do you mean what, not CDP development, but what, what, can you be a little bit more specific as far as what you are referring to?
There seems to be a trend now all throughout Hawaii of taking land that's been designated for farmland or has cultural significance and developing it into, you know, parks or homes or apartments or whatever it might be. And I just, what, what's the position of this particular organization? It sounds like they're, you know, we're talking about development, they're talking more about infrastructure. But I'd also be concerned about how they feel about just developing our farm and vacant lands.
Well, one of the problems with our housing situation right now, especially on the Hamakua Coast, I would say, is we do a lot of Ag 20. So you have a 20-acre parcel and someone puts a very big house on it and they put a gate and nobody can access it. You can't access, access your shorelines. You have a very difficult time. We've, I was just alerted to two situations very, very close by that the new owners have blocked access to the shoreline and you're not allowed to do that. And these are, I've been to them, like they're, they're very public places. So, you know, it's always educating the new homeowner, like, hey, you can't block this. It's, it's always an awkward conversation to have. There are places on the Hamakua Coast that are, it, I would say adjacent to communities that are zoned appropriately, that we can put, we can extend the community and build affordable housing. We have a, we have a supply problem right now. We, we, we don't have very many homes that a working class family can purchase. And so smart development in places that make sense where infrastructure is already in place and can handle that totally fine. I hear you with, I, I always think of places like Waikoloa where they are approving at an astronomical rate communities that are $4.5 million homes and gated communities. And you just gotta shake your head and wonder, who's, who's living here? What, what are these houses for? So I, there is definitely some concern with the sort of willy-nilly or it's not very transparent as to where these, why these permits are being approved and what kind of cultural significance these places are that are being built. For us, it's, it's definitely shoreline access on the Hamakua Coast and making sure that we have that preserved. So I don't speak for everyone. We all, we all are our own individual candidates. But I, Core 24, we are for smart, smart development, not like an explosion of high-rise buildings everywhere. And really looking at, it always goes, then it goes to jobs, right? We have jobs on the Hamakua Coast. Everybody lives in Puna. We need to be able to live and work in the same place. And that would also alleviate some of the traffic in Puna, you know? So, so looking at, you know, how do we react to, yes, the Hamakua is a great location for farms, but we need to have the ability to build an ohana on the farm to house workers. So that's kind of smart building, not code, but like looking at it from a CDP kind of plan and being smart about it instead of just approving brand-new developments for, you know, million-dollar homes, multi-million dollar homes for, you know, vacation rentals.
Thank you. Next question? I forget who is next, whether it was Mikelia or Nelson?
I can just go. Actually, I, because I have a question, kind of piggybacking off of what Jeff was asking. But hearing your answers, Brittany, the question that came up is there seems to also be a problem aside from just supply. I mean, first of all, we live on an island, so there's limited space. You know, we can't just like keep, keep increasing the supply exponentially. At one point, we're going to ruin on a room. But there seems to also be a problem where when we do get affordable housing, first of all, what is affordable? Because what the state seems to think is affordable is not really what's affordable because the minimum wage is still not matching with the cost of living is. So what's affordable isn't even really affordable. But in addition to that, there's also a problem where even if we build, you know, all these new housing units, I keep meeting people that say, oh, I just moved here and I live in affordable housing or I just moved here and I'm, you know, living in, or I got Section 8 housing, which is fine. But and yes, we do have like millionaires and billionaires that are moving here and getting these giant conglomerate properties and spending millions of dollars. But we also have a lot of working class and middle-class families that are moving here as well, which is fine. But then that still leaves all the locals in the same exact place. Because if all the affordable housing units are, you know, being bought up by people that are not from here or are not currently living here, then how are the locals, particularly the native Hawaiian population, supposed to still find housing when land is limited? You know what I mean? Like there's, there's only so much land and space to go around. So I wanted to kind of pick your brain as, those are some of the issues that I foresee coming is that we like build all these affordable housing units more and more, but they just get filled with people that are not from here. So what, what are kind of your ideas about some of those issues? Or what are some solutions that you could see around some of those issues?
I believe that it's, one of them has already started where they do local preference for Section 8. I, I believe that's already been started. There is something and I haven't really, it's been on my radar. There is a HUD program that is first-time homebuyer. And I don't know how they've changed it, if they've done like 0% down or I'm fuzzy of what it is current, what the program is currently. But I know that counties can use that and then they can put a residency requirement. So it's hard to do a residency requirement when you're purchasing homes. It's hard to say like, you're from California, you can't buy here. It's very, it's almost impossible. They tried to do it even with rental cars, I think. They were only going to charge tourists, people from out of state. And, and that got struck down because you're interfering with interstate commerce and you can't, you can't do. But what you can do with the HUD first-time homebuyer program is you can say, because it's county, part of it's county-administered, you can say you have to live in the county for a year. And that would then, first you have to have rental units as well available. You know, it's like, how do you, how do you do that? But if you are from here and you grew up here, you have residency already. So, you know, that should be fine. So we could definitely look into that program and administering it to put more local families in homes. That's just one of the things that has been on my radar. And also the permitting process. I think they're also working on getting more plans that don't, that goes through permitting very, very quickly. So like a six-day turnaround because it's already pre-approved. So you can just get it, it gets stamped and you can build your house. They're doing multi, multi-unit, like, you know, two-family home. So you could have your, your parents downstairs and you can live upstairs, which my parents keep bugging me about. But so then you can have multi-generations living in the same home and you can build it very quickly in that regard. So there are some things that are already happening. We, you know, everything takes a little while. So in the next couple of years, and hopefully if I'm elected, you know, we can see some more of that momentum to put more local people in local homes.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Nelson, next question?
You know, you talk about infrastructure. And with all these developments that have, that's being built or coming up or have been approved. You know, everyone, it's at least on the west side, we're going to be, these new developments will be tying into the wastewater treatment plant, you know, at Keahole. But the facility is taxed already. You know, you, you're adding easily a thousand homes to the grid. And, you know, we don't have the proper infrastructure to support or to handle all these new homes. You know, facilities is old. How are we gonna raise monies to be able to build the infrastructure? Now, you mentioned increase in taxes. But you know, this county, over 70% of the county revenue is coming from taxes, homeowner taxes, or real property taxes. Let me clarify that. And you're going to raise more of, more on, you know, property taxes? You know, what else can we do? What, what's besides your farming type of idea? What else can we do to diversify the, you know, our, the island's economy to get more revenue from other sources rather than just depend on increasing real property taxes? Pretty soon, you're going to tax out businesses and, and peoples from their own homes as well.
Oh, that, there, it seems like that's a two-part question. So the first question is how do we fix our wastewater treatment facilities so that they can handle the increased homes, home building? And the other one is how do you find money to do it? Well, I, I didn't, I didn't mention this piece because it was like a summer job, but I worked in wastewater. I have been a wastewater treatment operator. So in the summer times, I was a, I was a weekend operator. So I know wastewater. I did it for, gosh, so high school and college, about six, seven summers that I, I worked at two private wastewater treatment facilities and one municipal water well pump station. So I have a bit of knowledge in that. And I will tell you, the county wasted $11 million on plans for a $160 million wastewater treatment facility and they can't use the plans because they don't have $160 million. That was $11 million that was wasted for plans that now sit on a shelf. Oh, that could have been used to increase the infrastructure or at least maintain our wastewater treatment facility. So, you know, it's kind of one of you, they're, they're using money to fight a lawsuit for something that it's dumping, dumping sewage into the ocean, which the EPA has already fined us for. We know we've done it. So why are we spending money to fight it? We should just, like, how do you, how do you fight something we know we've done, you know? So you see a lot of waste. I see a lot, a lot of waste, funny enough, in wastewater. They have not been maintaining these treatment plans because they've been focused on turning it into R1. So an R1 wastewater treatment facility can, they, they treat that wastewater to regulations that allow it to be used for like agricultural irrigation, non, non-drinking water. So you can use it in ponds, agricultural ponds. So you, the hotels could use it to water their plants, golf courses could use it to water their golf courses. And these are pie-in-the-sky plans that cost millions and millions of dollars. So, so the county has been fixated on taking the current wastewater treatment facilities. And District One has two of the four that were fined by the EPA. So they're, they've got all these plan, oh, we're gonna do these like very, very modern facilities, but they don't have any money to do it. So they're wasting time and money with creating these plans. Meanwhile, they're letting the maintenance fall on these treatment facilities. So I suggest, and, and this is the mayor's appointment, the council did not appoint the lead on this. So I would suggest refocusing on maintenance so that we can bring them up to safe, like just safety-wise. The operators are working in very dangerous conditions and we're poisoning our oceans with raw sewage. So first and foremost, we need to bring those wastewater treatment facilities up to maintenance, their, their maintenance need to be brought up. And, and then we can talk about how we can make them bigger and better and use probably federal dollars and, and state dollars in order to make them big and fancy. But right now, you know, they're broken. So I think we can just shelf, we could, we can table making them really big and fancy and just get them working. Just get them working first.
Okay. Did you want to address the other question regarding revenue?
The revenue. The revenue. So, you know. That is. That is more difficult. That is a more difficult challenge because. I would say the core twenty-four perspective, our perspective is that the government should not be. Like, in the job of being, being uh creating revenue streams, really. Uh, I should be making sure that our roads are paved and that the trash is, you know, being safely disposed of. Sure, with the compost we can generate, we can generate revenue supposedly with, if you had an R one, you can charge for. Um, the, the water that comes out of it, you can charge the hotels for that water. Um, it's, it's very tricky. I, I. With our permit amnesty, what would happen i- and, you know, you spoke about taxes and taxing people um to out the wazoo. But. If you did permit amnesty, you could bring up or into permit. Additions, um, buildings that are built to code but are not permitted. And so you would end up increasing your um, your property taxes because. I, there's plenty of homes, there's plenty of properties that have homes on them that are not permitted. You saw that with Leilani. And the lava flow, a lot of people couldn't get money for their homes because their homes weren't permitted. So bringing these, these homes that are built to code, but were never permitted. We can end up increasing our revenue and, and generating a little bit more revenue, but really cutting the waste out of. Um, out of the county, I think we're gonna find that we can save a lot of money. Um, just, you know, not chasing our tails. And, and chasing really pie in the sky ideas of, of what we're gonna do and, and throwing money at consultants. The consultants are the ones making all the money. So if we cut that out and we really focus on delivering top-notch core services. Um, and cutting out the waste, I, I think, I think we'll be able to, to have a really nice budget.
Balanced budget. You gotta make balance.
Always.
Mikel, next question, please.
Yeah, so um, I kind of wanted to shift focus and talk about um native Hawaiian rights. Um, obviously, as a, any politician, your, your constituents include the host culture as well. And so. Um, what do you see as some of the most pressing is- issues facing the native Hawaiian community in your district?
Ooh, um. Well, I think healthcare is a big issue. Um. Uh, and I think telehealth, telehealth is kind of the answer for giving access to people that are traditionally underserved. Uh, i- in healthcare. Uh, telehealth is fantastic. My husband works in telehealth. Um, and as long as you have a smartphone, you can press on an app and be connected with a medical provider. Um. Unfortunately, um, native Hawaiians face really, wasn't it, really high levels of health disparity. Um, and I think telehealth would be a real asset on getting that into the community. Um. Uh, yeah, I think, I think that would be my number one. The other one is Waipio Valley is a big issue. Um, and. I just see, I see, unfortunately, well, I just spent time in Honakahua, so I heard, I heard an earful about that. So that's really on top of mind right now. And balancing the needs of. Uh, of the native Hawaiians that farm down there. Um, and. It, it feels like the county is, is going into a, a, like, they wanna commercialize it. They wanna generate, they wanna sell permits to go down there. Uh, they wanna widen the road, they're gonna put in a parking lot. And it's like literally the, the, the phrase pave paradise and put up a parking lot, like it, it. It embodies what they want to do with Waipio Valley. So I, keeping Waipio Valley as a sacred space. Um, for people that live here, um, the native Hawaiians to be able to have, you know, their traditional ceremonies and, and really honor it the way. It's supposed to be honored, I think is really, really important. Um, balancing that kind of. You know, it, it's a very, it's a very mysterious place. People wanna see it. You can view it from the top. You could maybe take a tour down there and then you leave. Whatever you take down there, you, you take back with you. You know, having trash cans um is just like. It's, it's such a sacred place. I can't imagine commercializing it to a degree where you're putting in a parking lot. Yeah, I just, I can't. I'm sorry, I, I get.
I, I'm glad that you touched on that, actually, um, because that's something I don't think we've really talked about with um any other interviewer before. But that is a really big issue um that everybody on the island is kind of feeling. So I'm glad that you, you touched on that.
Oh, and I, I will say, I have, um, I call him like a spiritual advisor. Um, he, native Hawaiian and uh I, I talked to him and I, I, you know, bounce ideas off of him. And, and he tells me his perspective too. So um Kalani is, is a very near and dear friend of mine. And, and so I use him as kind of a guide, um, if you will, and, and being able to have that, that. Um, open line of communication and, and get that feedback.
Zach Kalani Souza?
Yes.
Okay, he's a good friend of mine as well.
Yeah, yeah, he, he married my husband and I in two thousand and eight, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah.
We were neighbors. Um, Nelson, next question.
I, I pass, let someone else take the lead. I've got it, I'm formulating my question, that's why.
Okay, I can ask another question. Um, so kind of on that same thread, like with, with native Hawaiian issues, obviously, one of the most. Polarizing and very controversial issues on this island in particular is Mauna Kea. So I just wanted you to kind of talk on that. Where, um. How would you see, out of curiosity, that particular situation kind of moving forward? Who do you think should be making the decisions on that? How do you think, you know, we could? We could kind of um remedy this, this contra- controversial uh project with T M T? And where do you see the direction of that go?
Yeah, and it's like, it's like a, um, gosh, it's not a, it's, it's like a collective like trauma, right? Everything about it is just, it's, it, it brings up so much emotion uh for so many different people. There's so many different sides to it. Um. It is not in control. Uh, the Mouna is not the county's control. We don't have the ability really to make that decision. It would be nice if the county could, um, if the state would just defer to the county. I think that would be a smart, um, a smart move. And I know that there is a group, um, I believe they're all native Hawaiian, uh, that meet. Ooh, I would say every month, um, about Mauna Kea and T M T. And they take testimony and they, uh, I, I'm not sure that they have much teeth. Um, in what they can accomplish. It's more of just a, a forum that was created for people to give feedback. And to kind of collect the stories around, you know, and, and really have a collection of what the community wants. Uh, and what the community needs. Uh, but I don't know that it's going to end up being actionable. Like, I don't think this state really is going to take that into consideration, unfortunately. Um, I want, I do recognize that astronomy and following the stars is, it's um ingrained in Hawaiian culture. Um, they studied the stars, they, they follow the stars. And so, you know, it, astronomy. Could, can be a, a very powerful tool for connecting with your culture. So I don't wanna, I don't want to downplay that. Um, for native Hawaiians to be able to do that, to have that opportunity. Um, and we talk about, you know, brain drain. So a lot of our best and brightest, they go off-island to get jobs elsewhere. So having an industry where we can keep our best and brightest. I don't think T M T is going to be built. Um, I would be surprised. I think that they're already moving um to Chile. I don't think that they anticipated uh the cultural sensitivity of building it here. Uh, I know that it was also a catalyst to decommissioning or to removing the telescopes. There's a limited amount that are supposed to be up there, you know, and, and I, and I do know that. The astronomers are feeling that pressure of, we're not really welcome here. And, you know. The Mount Elise, I think it's twenty thirty-three, that would be, whether it would be renewed. And they're not filling new roles uh at the astronomy center. They're kind of, they're looking, they're, they're like in limbo. So, you know, it's, do we have an industry that is culturally sensitive? And we have native Hawaiians leading the charge? I mean, the, the stars that they find, they name Hawaiian names, like, that's so special. But at the same time, you know, you have to, you have to understand the sacredness and balancing those two. The state, the state has their hands full. I, I, I don't know what they're going to decide. Um, and I don't know what their plan, the state's plans are with the Mouna, but I'm hoping that they take. The community here on the Big Island. I hope they take the stories and the wishes of the community into consideration, which, with whatever they choose.
Thank you. Um, we have uh time for one more question from each of you. Uh, Nelson, do you have your last question?
Sure. Quickly. What if, you know, Maui County, they don't pay the extra point five percent cert, county cert tax to the, you know, to the. State sales, uh, general excise tax? Now, everyone, all the other islands do pay it, but it's for the benefit of the, the rail system, right? Now, what are your thoughts on it, Ken? I don't know if it's a county issue or it's a state, more of a state decision, but. You know, half percent every time you shop. It's not only me, I mean, you know, everyone that is on this island realizing that we're paying this half percent. Surcharge, when we know, you know, essentially, we're not getting any benefit. We're not gonna ride the rail, more than likely not.
Well, if you ever go to Oahu, you'll have to ride it, because you paid for it, right? Um, yeah, I was totally against any of the counties paying into the rail. Uh, it was a Honolulu County project. It should be footed by Honolulu County itself. Um, T A T is another one. The, the state captures a lot of our tax dollars. As far as our G E and our T A T. Uh, so we're allowed to put, uh, with T A T, we're allowed to put our own surcharge. And then we can capture that surcharge. But, you know, you're looking at three percent and the state takes ten percent. G E is, you know. Yes, I agree that I think we should not be paying for the rail. I don't know that at this point, there's much that we can do about it. You don't usually get to um take taxes away. They like to add them, but not. Um, take them away. Um, but yeah, no, I'm totally with you. I, I thought when that decision was. I, I couldn't believe that it passed. I couldn't believe that the other, the, the county, that, that the Big Island would be paying for the rail. I agree with you.
Yeah, but Ma, just remember, Maui said no.
Well, I, I, I don't know about that and I don't, I'm not privy to any of the communications, you know, from that negotiation. Uh, I do know that I, I would like to be an advocate for our district and I can be very bullish. I can, I, uh, I, I can be. Um, yeah, bullish. I guess I would call myself a little bit bullish as far as I stick to my guns. Um, so I hope that I can advocate for the, for the people of the island in those types of situation and, and especially for the people of District One.
Thank you.
Can I ask my last question?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Okay, cool. So my last question actually has to do with marine management. Um, so there obviously has been a lot of talk about the aquarium trade industry and wanting to ban it. Uh, do you in particular support banning the aquarium trade industry? And would you work on legislation to mitigate the trade's impact uh for this island or for your district in particular?
Um, yeah, uh, absolutely. You know, when I, I was writing for Kale magazine, I did an article about. The fishery program, um, and there's a whole, uh, it actually used to be in the old wastewater treatment facility on Keakaha. And they have tropical fish that they grow and they rear. And so it's a great opportunity for people to do, uh, to, to grow these tropical fish and, and. Uh, in, instead of pillaging our, our oceans for, you know, it's just. You could end up. Creating an industry in and of itself, just growing these fish instead of going and catching them and taking them out of our oceans. It's, I, I guess my stance on it. But yes, I, I, I don't, I don't see what would stop me from supporting a bill. That would keep more, more of our fish in our ocean. Uh, yeah, no, I would definitely support that.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Brittany. It was uh great to have you join us today. And uh, thank you, Mikel and Nelson for conducting the interviews.
Thank you very much, Brittany.
Uh, at Huli Pack, we're, we're building something that the political establishment has never seen before, a slate of phono leaders. Um, for more information, visit our website, hulihi.com, H U L I H I dot com. And uh, uh, lastly, I'd like to encourage everybody to please vote. And uh, you know, that is the one thing you can do that's really gonna help our island. Is just getting out there and vote, talking to your friends and your family about the candidates and um helping them with their decisions as well. Uh, thanks again and, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.